Welcome to the Saginaw Planning Commission Special Meeting of March 3, 2025. Ask for the roll call, please.
Commissioner Bland.
Present.
Commissioner Faust.
Present.
Commissioner Klocke is absent. Commissioner Weinger is absent. Commissioner Mellon.
Here.
Herrn Abson. Commissioner Nash is absent. Commissioner Oster.
Present.
We do not have a quorum. But we can start the presentation.
Today's special meeting is concerned with one item under new business. We're going to be having a presentation on the zoo zoning ordinance rewrite. And I want to welcome all the public here. I'm the chairman. We will not have any petitions or special land use. The meeting is videotaped, so it's important that only one person speak at a time and the audience observe respect for the speaker. There will be public comment after the presentation. The purpose of public comment is to address the commission. Speakers shall address their remarks to the commission as a whole. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual commission members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general questions about the subject of their presentation. All such questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Speakers shall not ask questions of specific commission members. Each speaker is limited to three minutes and may only speak once. Speakers should limit their remarks to business within the jurisdiction of the commission and our presentation this evening. Our friends from Giffords Webster, you may begin your presentation.
It would be my absolute pleasure. So it's so nice to see you all this evening. I'm Julia. I'm a senior planner at Giffords Webster. I know you guys have hit the end of the last couple of meetings, so I'm happy to reintroduce myself because it's been a while since I've been here and I am happy to be back. So we are at the final stretch of the zoning ordinance update. We are reviewing the last of the articles of the ordinance. And after this, we have final revisions and staff review, followed by a public hearing on the full zoning ordinance and a recommendation to city council, followed by city council's approval. So here's a QR code if you want to look at the draft ordinance and map as we're going along. So I'll give a second here. So the first article that we're presenting.
You want?
I think someone's still.
Sorry. Thank you. Sorry about that. So the first article that we have in front of you guys today is definitions. There is a lot of changes here, so I'm not going to go through each individual one. However, happy to answer any questions that you had on the definitions. Here's what we did to the definitions. We defined all of the new terms and uses that were in the ordinance. There were a lot of uses that may have previously been called one thing and we changed the name to another thing. There were situations where, for example, it used to have barber shops and hair salons and massage studios as different uses and we created a use called personal services and defined that. So there's a few of those definitions. Then we removed terms that weren't used in the ordinance. So if there were terms that previously existed that are no longer used in the ordinance or are maybe really common knowledge terms, like food was defined, we removed those. Then we consolidated all of the definitions into a single section. So you guys previously had terms defined for things like signs or wireless communication facilities in the sections about signs and wireless communication facilities. In the clear zoning ordinance, all of the definitions will be in one place. We do have kind of embedded definitions, so it will say signs and then underneath signs, all of the sign definitions are listed. So you still are able to kind of pick out which definitions are grouped together. And that's going to be in the final draft of the clear zoning that you'll see at the next meeting. Right now, we just have the list in your packets. I did include, I'm sorry, I didn't mention this at the beginning, along with your packet tonight, there's a master list of all of the terms that were defined. So in addition to all of the definitions, there's just kind of an overview list that shows you words that were removed or crossed out. Words that were either updated or changed are blue and then words that weren't changed at all are black. We removed all of the standards from definitions. So for example, under single family, that had the most, I think, of any of them. But when you had the rules and regulations of the ordinance, those shouldn't be in the definition. They get hidden there. So we put those in the appropriate sections of the ordinance and kept definitions strictly to the function of defining terms. Sometimes there is like a regulation that may be the distinguishing characteristic of a use. And at that point, you would include that standard, I guess. We removed definite, or reviewed the definitions for clarity and legal references, so updating all of the unclear definitions or ones that were obsolete and outdated. And then we updated the sign definitions. I think all of those were changed largely to comply with recent Supreme Court ruling, Reed versus Gilbert. We've talked to you guys a bit about that and we really had to overhaul the whole sign section to make sure that you were consistent with that ruling. Basically, they want, that, it was in 2015 and the case ruled that communities aren't allowed to regulate content on signs, that that's a First Amendment violation. So a lot of times, sign ordinances would say things about, you know, a real estate sign has to, is allowed to be this big and a yard sale sign can be this big and you can't do that anymore. So we had to go back and review the sign ordinance and really change it to make that consistent. So those were the big changes for the definitions. I know you guys have a list of all of the actual text. I am happy to answer any questions now. If you feel more, you need more time with that list, I think that would be helpful to know as well.
Julia, I have one kind of general question. You said some of the definitions was for legal reference. Besides the sign ordinance changing due to a court case, are some of the other definitions also impacted by, were mirroring definitions under law or cases that have been adjudicated about something?
Yeah. And a lot of the times, we would try to broaden the reference, I guess. So instead of saying the specific number that's required of something, we might say as defined in this act or this regulation. So that way, if they change the act or regulation, the ordinance doesn't need to be updated every time. And we also, I think, agency names is a common thing, too. So DEQ changed to Eagle. That one comes up a lot, so anytime it mentions DEQ, we change it to Eagle.
If I may, the other thing, too, we really tried to mirror was for the land uses that have really a direct tie to state licensing, like childcare and adult foster care. We tried to replicate those, those terms as they're defined in the state's act so that it's really a nice one-to-one relationship between the two.
Someone could be in Detroit looking up a reference. It'll be the same when they see our code.
As long as Detroit has it, correct?
Well, no, but I mean, their office could be there and then they can refer to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have two questions on the definitions. Dwelling attached single family, that just, I don't know if I'm reading that right wrong or if that's correct.
Generally, it's a common way of talking about townhouses is attached single family. I'm not sure, how we define that. So yeah, so that's kind of our terminology for what's typically referred to as a townhouse unit.
We could say something like commonly known as townhomes as a nice little example in the definitions, if that would be helpful.
Okay, yeah, that might clear it up a little bit. The other one was under signs temporary. There were not any examples there.
Add examples to temporary signs? We can do that. And I think the temporary sign types, when we have the definitions, might be embedded under the temporary sign, so it'll be a little bit more obvious.
Yeah, I see, I see what you're talking about, Commissioner Faust. Yeah, we say examples include, but are not limited to the following and then don't list the following.
Yeah, and I think that's because they're embedded. So that's how it was, sorry, in the, when you had the signed draft and the other version and not in this list, those are kind of like, the temporary sign definitions would follow that, that. But they're, we put them in alphabetical order, so they're not following that. So we'll fix that.
Okay. There too.
So if there's no other questions on definitions, we'll get into the building types, which the building type standards are actually in Article 5. And I know you guys already talked about that, so I'm just wrapping up the rest of Article 5 here. So building types allow you to regulate by the type of building instead of as much the use, although there are use regulations and we'll talk about that. But you want to encourage a development that's consistent with a walkable urban downtown and that's the reason why there's the different building types. The previous ordinance had a general mixed-use apartment, townhouse, urban house, and drive-through building types. And the new building types are a little bit more broad in that they aren't as aligned with uses. So multi-story, single-story, townhouse, urban house, and flex. So I have definitions for the building types and these are not in the draft ordinance. We are going to be putting them into the draft ordinance in Article 5. A multi-story building is a building with more than one story that is not an urban house, townhouse, or flex building. A single-story building is a building with one story that is not an urban house, townhouse, or flex building. A townhouse is a building with multiple units that includes one or more side walls shared between adjacent units and individual entrances serving each unit. An urban house is a building of up to three stories that includes a front yard. Typically, urban houses are occupied as single-family dwellings or houses of worship, places of worship. And then a flex space, and a flex space is a building type designed to accommodate, accommodate a variety of non-residential uses with adaptable regulations. This building type is best suited for land uses that require design flexibility to support specialized operational needs such as light manufacturing or food production. So the building types are regulated.
Julia, a quick question. So with the building types in the DDA area, which is where we have our form-based design standards, that all stayed the same?
They're different, this is, it's all new. It's all form-based still. This is all in the same areas, except for it's expanded. All kind of reworked that section, though, to fit in with clear zoning and then also just kind of what makes the most sense for Saginaw. For example, a drive-through building type isn't necessarily, we can easily say what a drive-through needs to do when they're on a site, but we don't want to plan for drive-throughs as, as this is one of the top building types that we want to encourage in our downtown. Alternatively, I think you guys had like, like general mixed-use and apartment. Those buildings are, the form on the outside are generally going to be the same, except for maybe the mixed-use has more windows on the first floor. So we only have one building type for multi-story instead of calling it a mixed-use and an apartment. So there's some definitely differences in this form-based code, but the goal is the same.
Yeah, and it doesn't, it won't affect the RRC certification for us, is all?
No. I think it's totally aligned with RRC and what they want to see. So those are the different building types that we have. There's a few regulations for the building types. There's the dwelling units per building, the maximum height, which some of the building types are regulated by the district. So there's building heights for each of the district, but then some of them have an additional height regulation. So for example, a single-story building, obviously, it's one story. For a townhouse, it's four stories. And for an urban house, it's three stories. And a flex space, two stories. Frontage types, I'll, the next slide kind of goes into further detail, but we have a few different frontage types that they can select from. Terrace, a storefront, a gallery, or a porch and a stoop. And a porch and a stoop, of course, are for your townhouses and urban houses. And then finally, we have, I think this is confusing the way it's written, so we're changing it. Right now, it says permitted active spaces, but it's going to say above-ground active spaces. And that's pretty much balconies and rooftop patios. The other thing I want to note is we have fenestration requirements with the districts. So that's your windows and your openings of buildings. That's not in this section. However, I think it's important that there isn't fenestration requirements in the MU4 district, which is the only district where flex spaces are allowed. So the flex-based building type is really, that's where you can have a little bit more flexibility from the design regulations. And the reason for that is because the areas that are currently zoned, RMU, flex, have a lot of industrial properties. And obviously, the building types that you currently have don't really work for industrial. So it was just a matter of time before one of those needed to do something and they were going to have a whole lot of issues with conformance. So we tried to address that by making that flex, that MU4 district or that previous flex district a little bit more flexible. For the frontages, so there's five different frontages. As I said, a porch and stoop, I think, I'm sure you guys know what that is. A terrace is going to be a flat-raised outdoor space, kind of like that image on the left. A gallery is actually something that you can walk through, a covered pedestrian walkway. And a storefront is your, that's what you're going to see the most of, your traditional downtown storefront. It says a frontage that lines the yard or sidewalk and is characterized by an entrance at sidewalk grade or yard grade. That's all we've got for building types. Do you guys have any questions? Awesome. So moving into the districts, we did make some changes to the current zoning map. I don't think that anything's going backwards, which means that we're not making anything more restrictive. We're not taking away people's rights. Some places are maybe becoming a little bit more flexible, but we're very intentional about preserving the transitional nature of some of zoning, the zoning districts. We're not going to propose high-intensity industrial in areas where it wasn't previously right next to residential or something like that. We consolidated R1 and R1A into a single R1 district. R1A, I think, was a little bit more ag-focused and you guys don't really have that. We have the R2 district as a standalone district still. R3 and R4 were consolidated into a single R3 district. And that was your medium-density and high-density multifamily. So you have one multifamily district now. B1 is going to stay the same, but B2 is a combination of B1A, B2, and B3. And I think it should be noted that B3, you had the text for it in the old ordinance, but it wasn't anywhere on the zoning map. So we really just needed to get rid of that. It was a pointless section of the ordinance, I guess, because it was for, I think, your downtown. And when you had the RMU district, everything was rezoned, but you still had the text for B3 in the ordinance. MU, so the RMURR is pretty much your MU1. So that's your residential mixed-use district. It's generally focused mostly on housing and neighborhoods. The RO1, all three of the next districts changed. That's the RMU institutional, RO1 or office district, and RMURC. They vary in where we reallocated them. I think for the most part, it's MU1 or 2. Most of that previous office zoning became that MU1. So you're generally residential in neighborhood, but neighborhood-level zoning district. So there are some commercial office uses that are permitted in that district, but it's generally residential in nature. And then we have MU2, which was mainly the urban edge RMU district. And then the MU3, East and West, is pretty much the same as MS, East and West. And MU4 is the same as that urban flex. So that's that one with the light industrial that I talked about. And then your manufacturing districts, we changed those from Ms. to Is because now we have MU instead of RMU and just trying to make it easier. So we have I1 and I2. You used to have three tiers of manufacturing. We now have two. So we consolidated all of the more intensive manufacturing into one district. So now I'm going to talk a little bit about clear zoning before we dive into it. So you guys have a copy of the ordinance and I have it up here on the screen now. I think there's a few things to note. So your navigation is going to be on the bottom of every page and this will always take you where you need to go. If you're lost, you don't know what to do, you can always hit this home button and that'll take you right back to your table of contents. The I is going to kind of give you the overview of how to use the ordinance. This graphic kind of looking thing is your use matrix. That's not in the draft yet, but I have one in front of everybody. And that's going to be the, the big picture, all of the districts and uses and where they go. So it's always a reference that you have in the ordinance if you need to flip back to it. And then this page will take you to your zoning map. So we don't have that in here yet, but if you click on the location button, that will get you to your map. Going back to the homepage, today we're talking about Article 3. And Article 3 is perhaps the most important article for navigating the ordinance. So when you click on Article 3, you immediately see, if you're looking at it as a two-page spread, you immediately see all of your zoning districts here on the right. And when you click on any one of those zoning districts, you get a really quick overview of all of the regulations that you need to follow. You have your purpose, you have the list of permitted and special land uses, you have your dimensional standards and graphics to go along with it. And then anywhere else in the ordinance you could possibly need to go to is going to be linked down here. So all of the cross-references in the schedule of regulations and then there's the notes, those are all here, that all the relevant cross-references to this district. And then any other sections of the ordinance that are relevant to residential, because we're looking at an R1 district, are going to be here. So accessory buildings, off-street parking, signs, landscaping, screening, fences, traffic visibility, and lighting are all linked here. And then you have your site plan review and special land use process also linked. And then if any of the uses have specific use standards, you can see what those are by clicking on the use. So if you are interested in what the use standards are for home occupations, you click on that and then you'd get right to them. So everything is very easily linked. I think when most people are looking at a zoning ordinance, they're asking one of two questions. They're asking, where can I put my business or whatever? And what kind of uses am I allowed to put on my own property? So I think to answer, where can I put my business, you're always going to have this table to say, oh, you have this kind of business, you can go in this district. And then they can look at the map. And then to answer, what can I do with my property, they're going to go right to their two-page spread. You know, I live in the high-density residential neighborhood. And then you go from there. So I think it's a really nice and easy format, but that's kind of a quick overview of navigation.
Question.
Mm-hmm.
Does this draft all exist as like a beta? I mean, you have checked, your links work and, and what is the estimated, I mean, if the council approves this on such-and-such date, when would this all go live?
When, I mean, when it's effective.
Okay, so it would be prepared to go right into it?
Yeah, right now, there is some cross-reference links that I think say XXX and things like that, but for the most part, we're, we're pretty close to being finished there. We do have those additional requirements. They're not in all of the sections yet, so that's something we have to fill out. So we have a few links that are missing here, but I think that, that's definitely something we'll have in here when we go to Planning Commission because, especially when it comes to something in context that's referencing another section, we want to make sure that the planning commissioners understand what they're approving.
And the goal is to, hopefully, if we can get all these bugs worked out, the goal is to have the public hearing at the Planning Commission in March yet. If not, the worst-case scenario is we would bump it into April and then the city council would consider it in, in their May.
And I guess I'm going to assume, but you can answer me, you've worked with our tech services people, this is all stuff they're prepared to service.
We, so how, how clear zoning works is every time, if you guys do a zoning ordinance amendment, you guys send it to us and then we have a per-page rate for updating it and we send it right back to you. We don't work on any of the amending texts or anything like that. And it's, so it's like $25 per page, but you just send it to us and we send it right back. And within a week, you get your amendments updated and your updated ordinance. So we, we do all of the updating, but it's a very simple process.
It's similar to American Legal. There's a fee when you send an amendment to American Legal, correct, Amy?
Yes, a much bigger fee. Well, I don't know about that.
So it's a process we're used to using in the general sense. Got it.
But they house. We don't house it. They.
Right. It would give us one of those messages, you're going off-site or something when you hit it on the city page and goes to it.
Yeah, it would go to the document.
Right. Okay.
So the first time doing this is I'm going to go through the main key changes of each district. So R1, as I said earlier, we consolidated R1N, R1A. We updated the purpose, the purpose statement to note that public and institutional uses are permitted when complementary to residential district and also accessory dwellings. So that's a new use. I think you talked a bit about it during the use standards in Article 4, but that's going to be your secondary unit that's permitted.
Yep, and that's what I'm going to have a question with right now because you're talking about R1 and R2, how that was all consolidated. And so now I'm looking at one of the areas of the city that's, used to be a lot of R1, R2, and now it's MU1. So in MU1, you can have like your multi-story, single-story, urban house, and townhouses. So how do we still control like a, a single-family residence that they would not turn into a multi-unit?
They, in, if they're zoned MU1, then they can. So if you guys have issue with that or are concerned with that, then that's something we could revisit. But all of the areas that are proposed for MU1, you are allowed to convert a single-family into.
Up to four.
Up to four.
Okay, that's right. I have a problem.
Yeah.
Yep.
Up to four.
Because that, what we did in the city years ago is we rezoned to R1 to, to control that because we had too many rentals on the west side, we had too many rentals on the east side, and I can see some neighborhoods coming unglued.
MU1.
Bill, this has been a part of the conversation with the master plan as well, and that was some of the areas that we looked at for opportunity. So this was really a consolidation of figuring out where there's opportunity for additional development and to eliminate as many barriers as possible, which is by providing more flexible zoning regulations.
Right, I mean, I understand that. And honest to God, that is not the way I saw this when it started because Bob and I have had this conversation with a home in my neighborhood. So, you know, the house could sell across the street and they could turn, you could take a single-family home and cut it up into two apartments. We are already at 50%, if not more, in rentals. So, and that's not sustainable for a city.
So it's, it's your zoning ordinance. We're just following the master plan and everything. So if that's a change that you want, we welcome the discussion.
So how do, how would we, how do we control that? How do we take and put some rigor around so that they're not converting single-family homes again into multi-unit rentals? Because if you're allowing townhouses in other forms of urban living now in the, you know, ADUs and such in that neighborhood, I think the main house should be, I mean, you can rent the house if you want. I don't want to see some of these big homes still being chopped up into rentals.
So I think that would require revisiting some of the places that are MU1 and considering if R1 is an appropriate. and considering if R one is an appropriate zoning designation instead of that. With that, the discussion of ADUs is a bigger discussion because that is proposed to be in R one. I think the conversation that we had with the steering committee and that we've had with staff is that as long as there's a restriction, that there has to be an owner occupant either in the ADU or in the house, then that's acceptable. Just because you're not going to have investors who are buying up houses to put ADUs on them and use them both as rental units. You'll only have, you know, somebody who, maybe it's their first home and they need to generate a little extra income. Those are the people who will be doing ADUs. And if an investor purchases the house, they can't get a C of O for the ADU. Because, you know, it's, you need to have at least one person who is the owner occupant. Or they can't get the, sorry, not not C of O, but the rental license.
Right. I mean, we even did something recently too where we have limited our short-term rentals just to the DDA district. So that, you can't have that in a neighborhood. So we're limiting the short-term rentals, but yeah, we're just going to turn around and the opportunity for multi-unit from a single unit, it, to me, that just doesn't make sense either. I'm glad we're having the conversation now because I was, I must have missed that memo.
That was discussed, the ADUs at the last meeting. But Bob and I have been thinking that R one might not be the best area because there was a lot of discussion and worry about accessory dwelling units. So that would be fine to pull that back.
Yeah, I don't mind an 80 years. I just, I'm looking at the homes that we still have left in the city that are single-family, large homes, that we had this issue in the past, and that's why we do what we did.
So the difficulty with that though is that, like for example, in the Cathedral District, you have spotty homes throughout that district that in your definition, you would not want to have chopped up. But then you've got these gaps, these large vacant properties of which you're trying to encourage infill and density. So, I mean, you sort of have to pick one or the other of how you want to do that.
I understand the infill, it's just the existing homes that are there is my concern.
Yeah, I know, I don't know how you deal with that.
Could we do something like new construction only?
You could.
But we might need a new zoning district to do something like that because we wouldn't want to do that to all of MU one.
Yeah, I mean, you could you could limit the up to four units as a new construction building only, whereas you're not allowing, you know, the chop-ups of current dwellings to that density. Maybe you would allow that to be turned into a duplex, per se.
Because I know when I, because when I lived in the Covenant neighborhood too, that was, we rezoned the whole neighborhood to R one because we had rental issues.
So this is also going to be an issue. I mean, R two, you have dwellings with up to four units, but it's a special land use. So they still have to come in front of the Planning Commission and it's discretionary and you guys can deny it. So if somebody wants to chop up their house and it's a special land use, is that something that you guys would consider? Or would you not want to see it at all in R?
So that does help because then that would be under a special permit.
Exactly, like they, through the Planning Commission.
Through the Planning Commission. That that helps. So like, because that's the way it is now. Here's your list of uses. Oh, and by the way, all of these need an S, special use permit.
Yeah, we could do that for MU one too.
Yeah. And just so we know too, what are, so your biggest concerns about the up to four units in MU one is to try to help preserve or encourage owner occupancy in the neighborhood. Is there anything site-wise that you have issues with, like not enough space? Not enough parking? Not enough screening to the next door? Okay. Because I mean, we can put standards in that try to meet those. Like, you know, only require or only allow a four-plex on an MU one's property if the lot size is a certain size.
Right.
Such as, you know, 10,000 square foot or something like that. But if you're not concerned about that kind of stuff, then we don't need to add that. It's mostly the owner occupancy is what you're.
We're not going to do the owner occupancy for units, it's just for the ADUs.
This is not just a discussion.
Just for the SLU. Right, so we'll make them a special land use in the MU one district. And then I think that we've mitigated that.
Not really, because in MU one, you also have two-family.
Right.
So somebody could buy that house and chop it up into two-family.
But that's already been the case for all of your R two.
I know, he's talking about R one.
That was the case for R two.
Yeah.
R one.
So places that were previously R one that became MU one.
Right, and that was the discussion that we had with the Cathedral District is saying, we're trying to encourage development, redevelopment of the area. And so let's look at maybe rezoning that to MU one and try and encourage infill within those vacant properties. So that was the, that was the whole idea behind it.
Right.
I don't think there's any problem with us just making it to new construction only.
Yeah, and we were also trying to encourage small commercial to come back to the neighborhood too. We're also trying to encourage small commercial, like a store.
Well, that's why we want the mixed use in there so that it has that. I mean, a big part of it is encouraging like live-work and corner stores and more commercial and mixed-use buildings. But with that comes density, kind of goes hands in hand.
Yeah, I think it would be hard to make like duplexes a special land use when you have mixed uses permitted.
Yeah, I think I think the solution would be to make it a special land use. Or perhaps you don't allow it at all. But I would say keep the duplex for sure because I think duplexes are really a standard thing to see in a, in a mixed-use, single-family district.
Any other comments? No comments, sorry.
I see where you're going.
I'm not sure if I have total direction on the changes that we need for that. Are we?
Well, then let's.
Can we put, yeah, three and four units or three-plus units as a special land use?
Three to four units is a special land use?
Three to four units.
Are you comfortable with that, three to four?
I was just trying to make clarity.
What do you?
And then make sure that says dwellings greater than.
Yeah. Also, I'm just trying to get some clarity of what you're saying, like what you're going to do.
Right. So right now, in the MU one district, we've expanded that into the Cathedral District quite a bit. Previously, those were R one, so they only allowed single-family. Well, the MU one encourages a broad mix of different housing types, so pretty much all of them are permitted. The suggestion to prevent the chopping up of houses was to make them a special land use. So that way they have to come to the Planning Commission and get approval and it's discretionary. And you guys can consider how well.
There needs to be a standard on deciding what that special use permit would be. And if you're saying, well, we're only going to allow for four units within this particular area, what is that based off of?
I mean, I think that there's three things you can look at and that's health, so, eh, public health, safety and public welfare. And I think that if you're considering the, the impact, the economic impact of surrounding area and property values maybe, might be the discussion that you guys are having when you're talking about public welfare, but.
So that's in, on both sides of the river then, right? Isn't that like all your MU ones is what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Should we bring up the map real quick?
I don't have it on this computer.
Okay.
Yeah, so MU one is really the the use that we've mixed, you know, in into the neighborhoods. Further down, we've replaced a lot of like the restricted office, the R O one areas. And then some of the general business that is a little bit more of like a mixed-use type of look already. So down State Street and Davenport, quite a few areas along there. Quite a bit of the area along Michigan Avenue, some of that. Then you go up Court Street and there's some of it on Genesee, South Michigan. And then on the west side of the river, or sorry, the east side of the river, some of it is down on South Washington Avenue where it curves and going over the Center Street Bridge. And then into the Cathedral District, that actually is the same color too, isn't it? The parkland, that parkland is going to be something else by now. The Cathedral District along Remington, the one-way's coming in. And then also a little bit around some of the edges of downtown that still have commercial buildings in it. And then in the northeast neighborhood, just north of 675, between that area and then Potter Street Station area. And some of that has a little bit more of like a B one general business. But we did put a lot of this mixed use in the neighborhoods to hopefully get some more infill with different housing types.
Yeah, because Bob's talking.
And mixed use.
Yeah, Bob's talking about the Cathedral District and just for the folks that are watching, we're looking at a map of the new zoning. Because even like on Hoy Avenue, we have like, it looks like R one on one side of the street and then you have MU one on the other side of the street. And then it goes into the neighborhood.
Because those are pretty much established in those particular areas.
Okay. So a lot of that was the neighborhood opportunity area, I believe, was the future land use designation, correct? Can I see?
Yeah, because, yeah.
I guess for staff, when we do go back and look at this and we're trying to craft something that makes sense and is legal, what is the concern? If it's if it's not the exterior stuff, if it's not things like, you know, there's going to be more cars or or things like that, what are the concerns with how the interior of these residences are structured?
Oh, that.
Historic preservation.
Well, I.
But even historic resources, we don't touch the inside. The historic district commission wouldn't review things that pertain to the interior.
Well, there's ways to get around that if the person that owns the home puts a deed restriction on the house, which is what I'm going to do. So you can't, you will not be able to come into my home and tear it apart. That is one of the last standing historical homes, if not a few that's in the city, but that's what I'm saying.
And 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 I understand that, and that's up to a private
Right.
property owner to to make, to make that decision, but.
Yeah. And I'm not just saying this because this is my neighborhood. I mean, there's more people in that neighborhood that don't and would not want their homes in the, my neighbor across the street is one of them. So he will make a lot of noise if he sees this being implemented. Again, that is another historical home because it's the Mud House, Dr. Mudd's, which dates back to President Lincoln.
But what I'm hearing is that it's, it's, the concern is based on personal property ownership preference, which isn't a public health, safety and welfare issue. So how do we tie it back to, what is the public health, safety and welfare concern that we're trying to address in baking it in SLU or prohibiting it altogether?
In, okay.
At some point, if you were, say, to take a large home and try to go to four units, do you not have a building code impact about entrance, exit, something? So is there a way to tie it to your building code that?
Well, there are permits they would need to seek to do it.
The plans and approve them.
You always need to.
From a zoning standpoint, can you restrict it to, it's only going to have one interior, one front entrance and one rear exit? And and that would would restrict what you can do with the interior.
Zoning code can't trump the building code.
Well, no, that's all I'm asking is, is at some point, they they interact. But I'm, I'm sure it's partly an appearance thing, but then it goes to, like you say, what's going on inside the building? How does it affect the outside? Parking's one thing, that's kind of obvious.
I think I understand what you're saying. Like, I live in Ann Arbor and so I'm sure it's similar to Saginaw where a lot of houses are chopped up. And a lot of times, they just have one front door and you go into there and then you're in like a lobby area and there's five different units that you can go into from there. And there's not an appearance from the outside of having a multi-unit building. They didn't add another front door. I think we could probably figure out.
One of the type of things you'd be favorable?
I can see that probably for some types of development, it would restrict them. Just to use it as another example, a town home, people know and expect, I'm going to have my own private entrance, my own exit to a parking garage behind or something. And so you may have a large house that if it's only going to have one entrance and exit, for some people, that would be, well, then just leave it as a single-family house. If I can't get a private entrance, I, because some people, security-wise, do worry that once someone's in that lobby, no one can see if they're going in their unit or my unit or any other unit. So, but I understand how it goes to the building code. Building code just wants to make sure in a fire, you can all get out.
Right.
I don't have a specific recommendation. I can just see that in an area where maybe it can affect it.
Okay, yeah, well, we can take a look at maybe if there's some better standards to address the home conversions and really tie that down. We'll work with Bob on that in the next week. So the other things here, besides accessory dwelling units, we just added adult daycare and cemeteries, which I don't think are too controversial of uses. And we reduced the minimum floor area per dwelling to 600 square feet. It was previously 864. In R two, pretty much the same changes as R one. So we updated the description to note that complementary public and institutional uses are permitted as well as ADUs. And the new uses that we have are ADUs, single-family attached or townhouse-style units and outdoor commercial recreation, which is a special land use. So I think that the the townhouse is the big change. This district does have up, units up to four as a special land use and duplexes as a permitted use. But that's not a change from the existing ordinance. The dimensional changes that we made, we reduced the minimum floor area per dwelling to 600 square feet and we increased the lot size minimum from 5,000 to 6,000 feet, a square feet.
I have a question about those. The minimum lot width, you increase to 60 feet. The vast majority of the city has been planted at 50 feet wide. So you're creating a lot of non-conforming lots. Most of them would still meet the minimum lot area because they're 120 or 125 feet deep. But the vast majority of the city, the plats are only 50 feet wide for the lots instead of 60.
We had some discussion with staff about 50 or 60 feet. So I don't, I'm not sure what landed us at 60.
So the R one districts are 60, the R two are 50. However, if you are putting in a two-family dwelling, increases the square footage of the lot to 7,200 square feet versus 6,000 square feet. There's also within the non-conforming use section, and I guess I have to go back to that, but there is a provision in there that if you don't, if you have a substandard lot, you're still able to build on it.
Yeah, I think that's on page three dash 62.
Okay.
That if you can show it on a map, that you're still allowed to do that.
Right, because I recognize.
But it's just adding another step and you're creating, I mean, probably anything that was planted more than 50 years ago is only 50 feet wide.
Right.
I think that the bigger issue is considering when they're going to create new lots if you want them at that size because of, to Bob's point, they can still be developed if they're non-conforming lots.
I see something, you mentioned it kind of quickly, but on trying to reduce, taking a large structure and cutting it up more, when your minimum floor area was 864, you had obvious, you know, that was restricting how many units someone would, could try and get out of even a large older house. By going to 600 square feet, technically now you could get to four where maybe you had a 2,200 square-foot house, you could have only gotten three, 20. So I don't know if that relates more to the having some of this, the only new construction, not old construction. And apparently in the zoning code, we cover minimum square feet. Is there anything in the building code that is addressed, it's the same issue?
Yeah, so you bring up a good point because. Yeah, so you bring up a good point because we're talking about new construction with a six hundred square feet.
Oh, that would be a new construction.
Yes, the building code standards, you still have to meet those building code standards. You have to have a restroom, you have to have, you know, a kitchen and that sort of thing. And there are certain minimum size requirements in that regard, so. You know, once, so when you're looking at remodeling or redoing a building. You'd have to still meet those minimum building code requirements.
Got it, okay.
I'm not sure if this is um new cons- like if you were splitting up a house into four units, you would look at that six hundred square feet, but then you would also look at the building code.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and so, yeah, we reduced the minimum floor area to six hundred here, too. Um, and increased the lot size minimum from five thousand to six thousand. But we did eliminate the specific minimum lot size for multi-unit dwellings that you were just talking about from seventy-two. There used to be a different lot size for for two-family and we eliminated that. If that's something that we wanna add back in, we can add that back in. But we we increased the lot size overall to make it so you just had one lot size standard. So that way, if a building was used for multi-unit, but it wanted to convert, well, I guess that doesn't change it. But if it was used for um single-family and you wanted to convert it, um, but there wasn't enough lot there. That you would still be able to because you have kind of more of a standardized lot size. But if you don't wanna be more, if you don't wanna be accommodating to that, then that might not be something that you want. Um, but again, this is the R two district where these have always uh been allowed.
Any other questions?
Go ahead, I guess.
In the schedule of regu- in the old schedule of regulations, yeah. Yeah. Okay, um, so in the R three, we consolidated R three and R four. Um, we updated the purpose statement to better describe the uses that are in there. And uh emphasized the importance of street access for multifamily as well as compatibility with adjacent residential. So this is your multifamily district and it includes all the different multifamily use types. Um, other uses that were added were governmental offices, accessory dwelling units, hospitals as a special land use. Live-work dwellings as a special land use, dependent senior housing as a special land use, museums as a special land use. And vocational training facilities as a special land use. Um, there's a combination of requirements that are, so this was a little bit weird cuz we're consolidating two districts. So the the dimensional standards are kind of a combination of both the R three and R four uh requirements. But we did add a minimum lot size requirement. So a lot of places in this zoning ordinance used to say things like the minimum lot size should be determined based on uh lot coverage, parking. Uh landscaping and all these other things that they're satisfied. Um, we think it's really important to also have a firm number for minimum lot size. You can say um the greater of the minimum lot size or this number. But um having a minimum lot size is what's gonna guide you for any land divisions that the city makes. And you don't necessarily have a use determined when you do a land division. So it's really important that you have a minimum lot size, it's a firm number in the ordinance. Um, so you'll see as I go that we added this requirement in a few districts. Um, the other thing we did was we eliminated the floor area ratio. This we also did in a few districts. Um, we eliminated altogether from the ordinance, the floor area ratio um determines kind of the height of the building based on the amount of. Space on the lot. And um it's a hard number to kind of quantify in your head. If you hear there's a floor area ratio of point seven five, you don't necessarily know, oh, it's a five-point-six acre lot. Let me do the math and figure out how tall I can build my building. So um to simplify it, we added building heights. And when you use both lot coverage and building height, you have the ability to regulate bulk pretty much in the same way. But without um kind of the the complications of conceptualizing what that means for your development. And that way, people always know, this is as high as I can go, this is as much as I can do. It gives everybody common expectations. Um, the height requirement that we were kind of talked to the steering committee in the city about a lot. Um, so I think this is good to talk to the planning commission about, too, was seventy feet. And how we landed on that is because that's kind of the maximum that you can go um at stick-built and uh, you know, economically built. Um, so I think that kind of the goal of the steering committee discussions and the discussions we've had with staff is making it possible for people. To uh, you know, get the best return on investment in a way that doesn't really disrupt neighborhood character and the goals of the city. Um, so we're looking at how they can maximize development on a site um in a way that's not overly disruptive. And so that's where we landed on seventy feet.
Just have a question on the illustration here. Talking about maximum height, seventy feet, it it appears to show it hitting a midline in the roof, not the peak. How's that, how's that work?
So it's in your definitions, we explain the height measurement, but the reason why you do that is so that way, if you have a peaked roof next to a flat roof. If they have the same height and you have the peak matching the flat roof, it looks really weird. Instead, you have the peak going just over and matching the flat roof at the midline, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I get it.
That's the way our current zoning ordinance is.
Right, okay. It it just doesn't have to have a expanded illustration showing that, but no, I get it when you say it.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's the best way to visualize why we do it that way. Um, so B one district, uh, there is a new purpose statement. It says, it's short, so I'll read it to you. The B one neighborhood business district is intended to provide a transition between more intensive districts and residential areas with commercial, with commercial uses and services. That meet the needs of residents in the surrounding neighborhoods and are compatible with residential development. Um, the uses that were added, places of worship, microbreweries, small distilleries and small winemakers, which are a special land use. Um, household repair and service, which is a special land use. Museums, special land use, daytime pet boarding, um indoor and outdoor commercial recreation. And those are both special land uses. Um, and one thing uh that staff had asked about was fuelings. I actually was kind of confused, you said vehicle service stations, did you mean service or fueling? Can't remember which one of you guys said that.
Gas stations.
Gas stations, okay. And so um gas stations are currently permitted in B one?
Yeah, so I think, yeah, we're we're separating those out so that fueling stations will be permitted by special land use in B one.
In B one, okay.
Which is the way they are now in the current.
Okay, so so by special land use. So that's a change that we'll make from the draft that we've given you as well. Right now, we were um lumping gas stations into service stations, which is why I was confused about that. Um, but we're separating those out. So when you guys see the final draft, you'll see gas stations listed as a separate use. Um, just because it's more intuitive for people, if you look at the ordinance and say, I'm opening a gas station, you know where it goes.
Yep, and in that big, in the big uh use matrix chart that we gave you today, you'll see that that row is highlighted. Because that was like a change we've made since since we published the other materials for you last week. Um, so you'll see on on pretty much the last page there, you'll see that row is highlighted yellow. As just a new, a new use we called out for fueling stations.
Rarely do you see a gas station have service face these days, mainly just convenience store.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there still are service stations around.
Well, um, we'll make sure to talk about both like when it's accessory to a repair and when the repair is accessory to a gas station. Cuz I think that both of those situations happen. Um, but not very often, you're right. In the B two, um, so the B two district is intended to permit a wider range of businesses and entertainment activities than those permitted in B one. The permitted uses are intended to provide businesses and services characterized by their reliance on vehicular traffic in more expansive trade areas. Usually found in major business areas along major streets, regional thoroughfares or near freeway access ramps. These uses generate large volumes of vehicular traffic, require substantial access for off-street parking and loading. And require detailed planning particularly as to relationships with adjacent residential areas. Permitted uses in this district include a range of compatible, commercial, public, institutional and office uses with multiple family residential and appropriate locations. Multiple dwelling residential, oh, that. Multiple dwelling residential uses are also allowed in a planned setting with business uses. I think we can remove that uh duplicate sentence. Um, the uses that we changed were places of worship, parking decks, indoor commercial recreation, passenger vehicle sales as a special land use. And outdoor commercial recreation is a special land use. Um, the dimensions, so this uh is interesting. Your B two district does not have very many setbacks for a kind of induc- intensive industrial district, which is something that Andy and I found to be uh pretty unique. Um, we are suggesting at least some sort of rear yard setback. Um, I think you may have had something for adjacent to residential, but let's say you have a coffee shop and they're, you know, right next to like a vehicle repair station and they have outdoor seating. It's just nice to have a little bit of breathing room between those kinds of businesses. Um, we did replace the floor area ratio with a seventy-foot maximum building height. Um, and then uh we don't have a front yard setback. That is uh current standard in the ordinance, it's a zero-foot setback in B two. Um, that's something that I think with discussions with staff, we wanted to talk to you about. Um, whether that zero-foot setback is something that you wanna maintain. I think having, again, a little bit of breathing room from these uses is a a nice thing to have. Um, but at the same time, because it's already zero feet in the ordinance, I don't know how many, I don't know Saginaw well enough to say if. If all of these places are built to zero lot line, you wouldn't wanna then add a setback requirement cuz then it's gonna look really funny if you have. All new buildings are setback from the existing um street escape. So I guess that that requires kind of a better understanding than I have about um. Whether the zero foot setback is used in B two and if it's something that we wanna maintain.
What's the recommendation?
Um, I I would recommend like a ten-foot setback at least, um, maybe even more than that. But I'd, it's hard to recommend without having a good understanding of, like if all of the buildings are built zero lot line in B two, I would not recommend adding a setback. Because then it's gonna look really funny.
And you'd make so many non-conforming.
Exactly, you don't wanna do that. Um, so I think i- it's hard cuz it's your existing standard, but it's not the best standard, so. I don't, I don't know if I have a good. Uh, a good recommendation, uh, except for to to point out that it's not the the best standard, but it's in the ordinance. And how would that impact existing buildings if it changed?
There's kind of a mixture, if you look at the zoning map of where these B two standards are, if the buildings are up to the street or not.
Do you get some of Genesee, some of. Some of Davenport, some of uh um North Michigan Ave.
Crash it.
Near one, near I six seventy-five. Yeah, some like Crash It.
I guess I go back to the fact that this zoning ordinance and that standard has been around since the eighties. And we haven't had a problem, so I'm not sure if there's a need to change that or not, I don't really know.
I think if it's been around since the eighties, it's probably, it's kind of institutionalized and it'll be hard to change. But, yeah, yeah, I think we'll we'll keep it. And that's that, that's easy. Um, all right, the I one district. So uh in the I one district, the intent is to permit certain industries which are of a light manufacturing, warehousing. And wholesaling character to locate in planned areas of the city so that such uses may be integrated with nearby land uses such as commercial and residential uses. Limitations are placed upon the degree of noise, smoke, glare, waste and other features of industrial operations so as to avoid adverse effects. The I one district serves as a transition between non-industrial uses and the more intens- intensive uses in the I two district. And there are some, so the um, the uses that we have here, there's some changes that we're making per staff recommendation. So it says kennels, but we're getting rid of kennels, so that's the first change. Um, then uh commercial greenhouses, governmental offices, uh the vehicle-oriented uses, uh commercial uses that. So there were some accessory commercial uses that just do not fit in uh industrial districts like hotels and restaurants and things like that. Um, we did end up removing those from the ordinance. Um, and then manufacturing light and medium and then heavy is a special land use. Um, and then we're also going to remove correctional facilities and junkyards from the list, even though they're currently listed in there. Um.
Can you say that again?
We're gonna remove correctional facilities and junkyards, that's also a staff recommendation. So right now, they're listed, I can't remember if they're permitted or special land uses, special, but they're gonna be removed altogether from that I one district. Um, so we replaced the floor area ratio with a height of thirty-eight feet in this district. And we did add uh some setback requirements here, again, because it's industrial, they have neighbors. We just wanna give a little bit of breathing room between the uses. Um, and so I have a screenshot of those setbacks here, but you can't really see it. Um, side yards are ten feet, rear yard is ten feet and residential is twenty-five feet. And there's no front yard setback still. Um, I two, uh. In the I two general industrial district, the intent is to permit higher intensity industrial uses in locations that are buffered with appropriate transitions from commercial and residential districts. Limitations are placed upon the degree of noise, smoke, glare, waste and other features of industrial operations so as to avoid adverse impacts. And uh changes were manufacturing, light, medium and heavy as a special land use. Uh, we made some formerly permitted high-intensity uses that were permitted as special land use. And um we removed service establishments. Um, again, those weird accessory service establishments that didn't really make sense in industrial. Um, we added setback requirements um and replaced the floor area ratio with a height of fifty feet. And those setbacks are the same as I one, ten feet on the sides and ten feet on the rears, twenty-five from residential. All right. Um, so we made it to the MU districts. Um, so this is your form-based code. Uh, how are these districts different? Your permitted uses are regulated according to the ground floor or the upper floor and if they're on a primary or secondary street. Um, this is a big change from the old ordinance because the old ordinance in the form-based code districts, they didn't have uses individually listed. Uses were under broad categories, uh, I think it was commercial, industrial, like they were very broad categories of uses. Um, some things were missing because of those broad categories and how they were defined. That would make a lot of sense in your uh mixed-use districts such as places of worship. Um, and we felt that also because you leave things open to interpretation when you use broad categories of things. Um, and to be consistent with the rest of the ordinance, uh, we maintain the same sort of use list that we do in every other district. But because these are the form-based districts and we're regulating by ground floor, upper floor, primary street and secondary street. There's a big chart in each of these districts um that kind of shows where the use is permitted. So for example, um, I think a multifamily dwelling isn't permitted on a ground floor because you don't, or in your uh MU three district, right downtown. Because you don't want apartment buildings in your ground floor, you want those ground floor uses to be active, commercial uses that are encouraging and contributing to foot traffic. So um, uh, other examples, um, some uses really have a lot of traffic, they might be on a primary street. Whereas uses that are really uh compatible with um residential or less intensive, those might be on your secondary streets. And um uses that it really doesn't matter where they go, those are gonna be permitted everywhere. Um, we do regulate uses as permitted or special land uses still. So in that table, there's either a P or an S to describe if the use is permitted or a special land use. Um, then these districts also have the building types that we talked about earlier. So each district has a list of the building types that are allowed in there. Um, there is a required frontage, so um, I guess I'll skip forward, there's setback maximums. So in addition to a minimum setback requirement, there's a maximum setback requirement. You can't set, right, if when there's a setback minimum of ten feet, you could put your building a hundred feet back and it doesn't matter. But when there's a setback maximum, the building has to be between the minimum and the maximum. There is also a required frontage and the required frontage is the percent of the front facade that needs to be in that setback zone. So between the minimum and the maximum setback. Um, there is building orientation requirements. This is new and something we talked a lot about with the steering committee and with staff. Um, is that when buildings are on the riverfront, um, we wanna make sure that they have the ability to design the building in a manner that faces the. have the ability to design the building in a manner that faces the use towards the river and not have as many restrictions on parking maybe along a street if they're trying to make the front of the building towards the river. So all of the MU districts talk about that, for the most part, the building needs to be oriented towards the primary street that's facing the building. But in some situations, if it has riverfront orientation, there is some variance from the ordinance, and Andy will talk more about that. There are fenestration requirements, so I mentioned earlier, that's your windows and doors, and what percent of the facade needs to have openings, and the parking setbacks and locations, so where parking is allowed.
A question. You mentioned when it's in the riverfront district, changing the orientation towards the, looking at the accompanying document for it here, where is that covered?
Andy's going to talk about it in a bit, but it's actually later in Article 3.
Oh, okay.
Yep, and there's a few cross-references to get you there. So if you were using, if you were clicking through the ordinance, you'd be able to find it pretty easily. But it is, it's further in this article, so Andy will talk about it in a bit.
Got it.
So this MU1 is your more residential mixed-use district. It's a pedestrian-friendly mixed-use district intended to accommodate a variety of detached and attached urban housing types with some complementary neighborhood business uses. Non-residential uses in this district include those which primarily serve the surrounding neighborhood. And again, this is the Cathedral District area and those changes that we made. It is very hard to parse what's changed and what stayed the same with these MU districts. And the reason is because the previous ordinance regulated everything by both building type and the sub-district. And we wanted to make this a lot easier. So I guess we have a separate section of building type regulations, but we don't have a chart for each sub-district that shows by building type for this sub-district, this is the setback, and all of that, like the old ordinance did. So that one, I think it was a bit of overload with the regulations and we tried to do the best to not change too much. But because we did kind of a different strategy when it came to organization, there just inevitably were some changes in there, but very difficult to say, point to exactly one-to-one each of the changes because this is hundreds of different dimensions that we're talking about in the old ordinance. In the MU1 district, the building types are multiple-story buildings, single-story buildings, urban houses, and townhouses. The graphics that I have here are from some online website with icons. They are not the graphics we will have in your ordinance. You will have much prettier building types that actually look like the buildings that we want. The development standards, the minimum lot area is 4,000 square feet and the lot width is 40 feet. Required open space, this used to be a ratio in the ordinance, again, something that's difficult to conceptualize for a developer, so we made it a percentage, and that's 7% of gross floor area. The minimum and maximum setbacks for this district, this is the most intensive of all of the MU1, 25 feet maximum and 15 feet minimum for front yard. And the side yards are five feet, interior side yards five feet, and the rear is 12 feet with an alley and 20 feet without. And the frontage in that setback zone is going to be 70%. So 70% of the building, of the front of the building has to be between 15 feet and 25 In MU2 districts, this is, I think, the majority of the MU, I would say, probably. MU2 is a pedestrian-friendly mixed-use district intended to accommodate flexible development and variance sales, preserve historic homes, integrate context-sensitive mixed uses, and serve as a transition from the more intensive MU3 and MU4 districts to surrounding residential neighborhoods. Uses in this district include a variety of residential densities, commercial and institutional uses. The building types are multiple-story, single-story, urban house, and townhouse, same as MU1. The development standards are pretty much the same, although the required frontage in the setback zone varies for primary and secondary streets, so 75% for primary streets, 60% for secondary streets, and 40% for a side or rear street. And the minimum and maximum setbacks, not a ton of changes here, and we did point out a difference, a distinction for urban houses because we felt like a front yard for a house is kind of necessary. So zero-foot front yard setback for all other building types and 20-foot for urban houses. I don't think the rest of this changed very much. Additional requirements in the MU2 to be aware of, the height, which I think this was a big change, is now 70 feet. Again, we're doing that maximum stick built number. The orientation standards that we talked about are in there. There is livable area requirements, which were in the previous ordinance and we didn't make any changes, the fenestration requirements, and the parking setbacks. In the MU3, it is your downtown, that's your east and west, you've got the Old Town and the Main Street part. It's intended to promote a vibrant, diverse, and economically sustainable urban core that fosters a balance of residential, commercial, and institutional uses. This district aims to encourage mixed-use development, pedestrian-friendly streetscapes, and a high standard of architectural design while preserving historic character and enhancing accessibility. There are two sub-districts comprising the MU3 district, MU3 West and MU3 East, different dimensional standards between them. The districts reflect the historical character of the respective districts. So the only building types are multiple-story buildings, single-story buildings, and townhouses. The development standards, the lot area is, for buildings 38 feet or lower is 1,800 square feet, and for buildings taller than 38 feet, it's 4,000 square feet. And that's just because once you reach a certain level of height, you definitely need a little bit more room on the site to make sure that there's sufficient areas, you don't just have a really skinny tall building. And I don't think we made very many changes to the setbacks. The street frontage requirements are the most intensive in MU3, so that's going to be 85% of the street frontage on a primary street and 75% on a secondary street. The streets are based on your Act 51 street maps, so roads that are designated as major thoroughfares are going to be called primary streets, and roads that are designated as local streets are going to be called secondary streets. In MU3, the maximum building height on MU3 East, it's 38 feet minimum and there is no maximum. However, buildings taller than 100 feet may only be approved by the discretion of the planning commission, following the same process as required for special land uses. Conditions may be added if determined necessary to protect public health, welfare, and safety. And that's again, just because when there's a certain level of density. And you guys have in here, we talked about parking already, in the MU3 district also, non-residential uses can have parking requirements waived. So if you have an office building that is, you know, 100 feet tall and they don't have any parking, the planning commission might not be comfortable with that or feel that it's appropriate for the site. And so that's why we have a special land use procedure for any circumstance where the height reaches 100 feet. In the MU3 West, there is a maximum height of 70 feet and 24 feet minimum. Previously, it was two stories and three stories. We went from stories to feet, and I think you had stories and feet. We like to not use stories because I don't care what's going on on the inside of the building. To your point earlier, we only care about what the outside looks like. So, you know, I think it makes a lot more sense to just have a height requirement. And then the fenestration in your MU3 is going to be 60% on a primary street, and these didn't change much from the old ordinance. All right, we're getting through it. So MU4, mixed-use 4 is intended to guide the transition of industrial uses to vibrant, adaptable spaces that accommodate a balanced mix of residential, commercial, and light industrial uses. This district seeks to encourage sustainable development by integrating adaptive reuse strategies while supporting redevelopment opportunities. Ultimately, the district supports a gradual transition from traditional industrial activities to a dynamic mixed-use environment with housing opportunities in close proximity of employment centers. And all of the building types are allowed in this district. There is also, as I mentioned earlier, no fenestration requirements. And again, that's because you have a number of industrial buildings, warehouses, it does not make sense to require windows in those. Additional requirements, there's a 70-foot height requirement that we added, they have the orientation requirements, the livable areas, and the parking setbacks. And we have a 4,000-square-foot lot size for them and a 40-foot lot width. And then before I switch over to Andy, I do have a slide about the zoning map. What you guys have in front of you here is a proposed map. I think that there's still some touch-ups that need to be made from a GIS perspective to make sure that all the zoning aligns with parcels to simplify things and not have any split zoning. As we've discussed earlier, I think that was the biggest change is kind of the growth of the MU1 district. We also eliminated the office district, and that is largely MU1. The purpose of eliminating the office district is because of kind of the economic opportunity that exists with office and to ensure goals of redevelopment can be met, it's important to permit a variety of uses. And with that, I kind of wanted the map to be a bit more of an open discussion because, if I'm being quite honest, I am not the most well-spoken in the geography, but I, obviously, this is, this is how the zoning actually becomes reality, so it's very important. And the, I would say that Saginaw staff had a major role to play in determining these designations, given our lack of geographic knowledge, so I just want to be clear on that. That's why we enlisted staff for assistance there. But happy to answer any questions on the map, and I think we should open it to discussion, and then I'll hand it over to Andy to talk about PUDs.
And real quick, the other big thing about the map too is for obvious parks, like Hoyt Park, for example, those will be zoned open space, OS. It's just we, we're dealing with these kind of chunks of land right now that the team is working on.
The primary changes that have happened, for the most part, and actually, the zoning really hasn't changed that much other than the district designations and the uses that are permitted. But for the most part, the primary changes are within the Cathedral District area. So basically, from Wilmington north to Hoyt, there was some, a few changes done in the northern part of Cathedral District. And then the areas north of 675 to the railroad tracks, those were changes that were made because of the amount of vacant parcels that are situated within there. And likewise, the properties along Wadsworth, we were trying to encourage redevelopment of those areas to some more commercial. Because if you think about it, the 675 corridor that goes through downtown, or through the, through town, has those off-ramps which would make it conducive to any retail types of And that's pretty much all of the change, other than the rezoning process that we went through the last meeting, where we were proposing to rezone the area between Union Street, along North Michigan, Schaper and the park, and the railroad tracks up to Davenport. And then the area along North Michigan as well, between Farwell and North, I'm sorry, North Washington, we're proposing that to be light industrial.
I'm going to suggest we take about a five-minute break or a little more before we switch presenters. Andy, why don't you go ahead and get the player back up here?
Great.
Yep, we're good.
So yeah, I'm happy to start discussing the remainder of Article 3. Julia covered really most of the really substantial and exciting part, and now I'm covering a little bit of the boring part. But I think PUDs are maybe of interest or of a concern or something that should be highlighted, so we did that here. So we are, first and foremost, we're renaming the PDD district to the Planned Unit Development District to match really what the state and what all of planning and zoning society calls these things. So that being said, we changed a few things on how this ordinance is written. You know, obviously, but first of all, I just want to remind everybody what a PUD is. So it's a tool to allow for flexibility in the use and dimensional standards of a certain site development. These are, you know, it's pretty important to provide this PUD language because, you know, you can't always plan out for innovative projects, you know, and the projects that are meeting, you know, present-day demands, let's say 10 years from now. So it's just really necessary you have these standards in so that the innovation can be achieved in a way that, you know, conventional zoning wouldn't have permitted it. But that being said, PUDs need to result in a demonstratable community benefit and need to align with long-term community goals. And really, they're, they tend to be quite common in cities for projects that are integrating multiple uses or buildings as part of a overall development site. So what we did to the ordinance is we revised the objectives to make sure that the objectives are, you know, sound in terms of what your planning and master plan, you know, wanted to see for larger development projects. We also provide eligibility requirements, so kind of a more clear understanding for people of what will be qualified as PUDs. The, there's two ways we do it. We automatically qualify certain projects. That means the planning commission is not going to need to make a decision on if it qualifies or not. A developer would already know that their project is qualified. So those are sites that contain five or more contiguous acres. Those are sites that are directly adjacent to the riverfront. Those are sites that are located within a TIF district, tax increment financing, a site that's a brownfield as defined under the state law, and a proposed development that includes a mix of residential and non-residential uses. In the draft text, we did include that the site is within the historic district, but after publishing this information to you, we're actually recommending to take that out based on a conversation we had with staff. Then the other, the other part of qualification is if a project does not meet one of those that I just discussed, planning commission has the ability to qualify it based on just a qualification review. So that means as part of your planned unit development review, the first step would be qualifying the project, you know, understanding that the project broadly meets the objectives of the ordinance and your master planning goals, and you kind of give it the okay to then proceed through the rest of the PUD process. Some other stuff we did with the PUD ordinance is we are requiring the fact that it needs to provide pedestrian access from a, from a public or private sidewalk. We are requiring it to also face a public street. The, we're also providing some requirements for the dimensional and use modifications. So part of the PUD process, as I just stated a minute ago, was PUDs are allowed to essentially waive requirements or reduce requirements of the zoning code. It's a little different than a variance through the zoning board of appeals. Usually, PUDs are larger projects that are kind of, you know, you might tack on, a developer might need to tack on, let's say, two to three, or even developer might need to tack on, let's say, two to three or even more modification requests as part of the process because, you know, they're, they're proving that this project is innovative, provides a demonstratable community benefit, and they, as, in, in exchange for that, they need a little bit of relief from these zoning ordinance requirements. So we specify, you know, the fact that you can, the, the Planning Commission can recommend City Council grant these modifications based on certain criteria. You can make modifications by the, you know, to the density requirements, to the setback requirements, to the height requirements, to the off-street parking requirements, open space requirements. So is, so, you know, we, we specify the process in which you're able to grant those modifications. We also just discuss, we also just note the, the exact process the plan needs to go through. So the plan starts in the staff's hands with a pre-application pro, conference. Then the, the plan progresses and is set on a Planning Commission agenda for, for the, for a preliminary concept review of the plan. And then that's where you might, that, that's where you might approve a discretionary qualification. So, so if it did not meet one of the automatically qualifying criteria for the PUD, you would need to make a decision on the qualification at that concept plan meeting. And then, a public hearing would then be scheduled, and then you would review the plan as a whole with a public hearing. And then, you would make a recommendation to City Council. And because the PUD is, is, is recognized as a change to the zoning map itself, City Council gives the ultimate planned unit development approval. The, we also specified an, an approval and amendment process as well. So we also stated that, you know, the developer could amend and approve PUD through a certain process. Major amendments shall just undergo the entire process all over again. But a minor amendment such as, a minor amendment that we specify in the site planner, in the site plan review procedures doesn't need full Planning Commission to City Council approval. It could be staff-approved. And we also refer to the performance guarantee language for planned unit developments as well. So City Council could require a performance guarantee, essentially a bond to, you know, as part of the approval, especially if it's a big project. That can be sometimes important, especially protecting the health, safety and general wel, welfare of the community. I guess planning developments was quite a bit, now that I think about it and after going through this. Are there any questions on planning development changes?
I'm aware.
Okay. I can move on. So in the draft ordinance we gave you, we found a small typo. The OS is, actually stands for open space. So the OS district is a district in which really the, the primary use of the district should be parks, pathways, recreational uses, recreational facilities, conservation areas. You know, these are, these are the spaces that essentially the city wants to remain green space and space that's ecologically and environmentally beneficial to the city. So a lot of, actually, most if not all of these should be public property. We don't want to give this to a private land, obviously. We don't want to restrict someone's potential to develop. So these, these will be things like your city parks, city-owned land that you want to make a conservation area. So, yeah, there, there will be a list of permitted uses. There just won't be many permitted uses. A lot of them will just be those outdoor recreational or parks, natural space, gardens, even public memorials. So we're going to actually put all of your city parks as zoned open space is the plan. Any questions on open space? All right. So going over really the, the rest of the Article Three requirements, we, we provide a little bit of clarity on, on the zoning map and boundaries and kind of the whole split zoning process. So we just say that in a split zoning, you can, you're looking at the actual uses on wherever the buildings or site falls within the property. There used to be a, a provision regarding a specific, when you're setback a certain distance, you could count the entire property as the higher zone. But now we're just getting rid of that. We're just saying, you know, wherever the zoning map boundary line falls, you can call one part B one and another part B two. The ZBA remains the authority that assign, that would particularly look at the exact boundary line. If there is an interpretation issue by staff and the developer, if, let's say, they can't agree on, you know, what part is zoned what, the ZBA would hear that and then, then you would go into site plan review.
Just to clarify some of this though, too, is that I'm working with the assessing department and the, and our IT department to try and correct all of these split zones that we don't have any more split zones, but...
So, yeah, so this language probably won't even come up as a, as something that you need to ever apply, but in the, in the event that's, you know, a split happens somewhere, some way, shape or form that somehow slipped through the cracks and nobody was able to, you know, administer, you know, enforce the boundary line, this, this would still apply.
Is it clear, so a split zone, we have part properties that some of them, the zoning is split somewhere in there, so that's what we're talking about?
Yeah. Good, good point, Cassie. Sometimes you just say words.
Yeah, it's just weird, like, some of these areas, when they were zoned, it was like they just said twenty feet off of the road is going to be this zone. And they ignored the property lines. So we're trying to fix. It's all over the city.
And so that's, staff's doing a great job, just, you know, going through all of the parcels and making sure that zoning matches properly. We also provide language regarding when a street or alley right-of-way is vacated, that, you know, the portion of land that then is, you know, made private property, you know, fits the zoning that it's adjacent to. We provide a little bit of language requiring Planning Commission or City Council to determine the zoning of an annexed area in the city. We provide, we don't do a lot of updating on, on street access, lots, yards and open space. We provide projections and encroachments all in one area. There's a lot of language of, of this in the RMU zone, and a lot of it was, in our opinion, pretty good language that, you know, should just be everywhere in your ordinance, not just in the RMU. So we created a table for that as well. We created some new, or we went over the Note to District standards. So you, you had a, a Schedule of Regulations table in your zoning ordinance, so this is kind of what we based that off of. We note that we are going to actually remove the setback, the step-back requirement of the Note to District standards. So that's something that is, we're actually taking out of the Note to District Standards footnotes right now. That just happened in this past week after you received all the material. And then, let's see, I'm not talking about riverfront yet, no. And then we also reference new requirements for height exceptions and riverfront orientation as well. I'll get to riverfront orientation at the end, though. In terms of just updated district requirements, we have little mini sections that reference particular, I guess, district groupings. So we still have the R one and R two requirements. We have the R three requirements. Here, we mostly emphasize some requirements regarding ADUs, accessory dwelling units, as well as accessory structures. We also provide a little, a little bit of flexibility for setbacks in frontage. So when, when, and I think this was actually in the ordinance currently, but we just moved forward the require, the, the allowance that the minimum setback can be reduced to, do you want to?
Yeah, it was, it was previously required.
Okay.
And now it's optional.
Okay, so now it's optional. Yeah, okay. And then B two, B one and B two, we have some districts that allow parking along the right-of-way when there is right-of-way on three sides of the lot. So when you're really, when you have nowhere else to park, that can be an option. We don't do much for the I one and I two districts group standards. In terms of condominium developments, we referenced the Condominium Act and we require a little, we, not require, we just provide some new standards consistent with the Act on what subdivision, condominium subdivision plans might entail. Nowadays, nobody does land division, like, platted subdivisions anymore. The new way to develop, like, houses in a single-family form or perhaps in a small neighborhood format is through the site condominium tool. So we just wanted to make sure that, you know, we know what to do when the city gets a site condominium application. We didn't do much the floodplain overlay district. In terms of multiple buildings on a lot, that was, there was requirements for those or standards allowing those essentially in a, in a certain way in the RMU district. And we've carried that over to apply in all districts now.
And I guess I just want to add to that. In that section, it's basically addressing a situation where you're developing something with multiple buildings. And let's say it says you can't have any parking in front of the building. Well, if you have a building in the rear and you can't have any parking in front of it, that's a silly standard because you have a building in front of it. So that's what that section does.
And then, I said it a little bit ago, but yeah, we provide standards for exceptions from the maximum building heights. So, um, let's see what we did there. Yeah, so mostly the, the MU one, two, three and four height exceptions was, was, was new, were new here. So Planning Commission can grant a waiver from the maximum height requirements when all of these three criteria are met. One, that the increased height will not increase the maximum height of structures of the same building type within a three-hundred-foot radius by more than ten feet. The increased density can be supported by public services, utilities and infrastructure. And that means Planning Commission may require a traffic study to show that the impact of the proposed density will not, will not have an impact on the surrounding road network. I said that wrong, so. And that the proposed structure is compatible with existing historic buildings. Last thing is riverfront orientation. So we provide, what we do here is, is we're requiring when a building is proximal, I think, I think the term needs to be proximal or the like, not just abutting the river, but perhaps, you know, one block off the river as well. So like Water Street facing the river or Niagara Street facing the river, we want to make sure that, that, that's actually the front, the front of the building by the building standards. So essentially, instead of the, the, a lot of times, we, we have the building type standards that requires entrances, windows, things like that facing a, a street, the river would be the street here. So everything would, would be oriented towards the river. There are some exceptions here where Planning Commission could grant a waiver to that if there are some, you know, if it's, if it's determined that the building and site design is still compatible with the riverfront, maybe they would have some sort of like outdoor seating or some sort of, you know, primary, you know, views of the river. But, you know, so, so there is an option to take the case to Planning Commission and you grant the waiver there. We also don't allow for parking between the, the building and, and the river in this circumstance. So, and then, and then the river becomes the primary street in terms of the land, the permitted uses chart that you had, that Julia had gone through with you earlier. Any questions? I kind of went through the non-PUD, other general requirements pretty quickly. Any questions there from your reading?
Yep. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to visualize that last piece on riverfront orientation. Looking at Washington. Where does that actually put the building then? I mean, is it, because right now our design standards say they have to be on the sidewalk.
I mean, so Washington, Washington's a good question. I mean, do we want to go as far as Washington for the facing the riverfront? Maybe not, because you probably still want Washington, buildings to be oriented towards Washington as you're really your main street in your downtown.
Because you have Michigan and Washington, those are the main streets that are parallel to the river.
So maybe it's just a Water Street and Niagara Street kind of requirement?
Washington is the next street over from Water Street. So if Water Street is your front, Washington is the back. But the way that I read it in the zoning code, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it's still, the entire thing would be a waiver from the Planning Commission so that there could be a discussion on, like, a shared back and front door. Or is it automatically granted if it's?
It's automatic for this river, and then if they want to do a different one, then the Planning Commission has to approve another one. So if you, if the Planning Commission would prefer that it was on Washington over the river, they don't really have the discretion to do that the way it's written here. So we can change this a little bit because we wrote it for directly adjacent to the river, which obviously is parkland and parking and not much buildings. We need to take another look at this and we'll work with staff and get something over to you really quickly.
Yeah, because I think that there's going to be, for example, those blocks between Washington and the river. My understanding of the Medical Diamond development, part of Water Street is going to disappear, so then those buildings would then be oriented basically towards the riverfront. But then you're also going to have buildings that are going to be perpendicular to the riverfront as well. So I think what we should be looking at perhaps is the percentage of facades within that area being required to at least have something along Washington or something to that effect.
So, we do accommodate the perpendicular entrance with that Planning Commission, you know, with the, with the Planning Commission able to allow something alternative. It's just that somebody could come in and, and propose it facing the river when the Planning Commission wants it facing the other way, and then they don't really get that discretion. So we'll fix it.
Yep. The, I, I guess I can go a little bit farther on my analysis of this, is that if you look at the MCVI building that was built there, you have this huge parking lot on Washington Avenue and then buildings are right on the river.
Right.
So that's, that's more of a suburbial-type design that we've tried to move away from when we became RRC.
Right. The intent was really for direct, like, the way this was written was more for the block directly adjacent to the river, which doesn't make sense because there isn't development there. So we need to rewrite it because it does allow, like, parking and if, if it's facing the river, then you're allowed to put your parking along the street. Well, we don't want that on Washington. So we definitely have some things to tweak now if we add this other block. So we're going to do some wordsmithing and get back to staff because this is not, it, it doesn't work the way it's written now.
Even if you look down from the new high school on Niag, Niagara there, then... Even if you look down from the new high school on Ni, Niagara there, that's, that's another section where you could have like a restaurant right on the river, but then not gonna park on the street.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's a problem. So we'll, we'll work on that.
Okay.
Question for staff, Bob. Is the Medical Diamond, is that likely to become a planned unit development project anyhow?
No, I think for the most part, some of this, excuse me, some of this language, we're developing in consideration of that.
Yeah.
So it'll be individual site developments, I believe. I'm not, I mean, I don't, I don't think that's.
I saw one plan, it's like five parcels or something.
Right. So, I mean, we'll be dealing with each individual development.
One thing I didn't note with the building type standards when I went over them is there's a lot of exceptions for civic and institutional uses. I think the main thing actually is penetration and not as much the building type stuff. But you don't wanna have windows, for example, on the first floor of a hospital necessarily. So we have some, some exceptions just because we're considering the Medical Diamond going in and that they might not be able to meet all of the form-based code design kind of criteria.
Do, do we know if that's planned for some of the streets within that development to be private streets rather than public? Or is it not as developed a plan?
Well, I haven't seen all of the plans, but my understanding is that, I don't think there's gonna be any private streets. They will just be dead end into the park.
Okay. Code the socks. I'm out of paper. Where are we?
Uh, I think that was, that was it. If we wanna just discuss any last thoughts you have on content and direction we need to go or what you'd wanna see before we give you a full, comprehensive look at the ordinance.
Just a personal observation, I have a feeling that some of the work being done here will only know how effective it is once a couple of developments happen. People come forward and say, well, this, yes, this works the way we thought it was gonna work and this doesn't. So.
I think, one thing you're gonna find, though, that I, I'm confident that you'll find is that things are gonna be more predictable and easier for developers on the front end. So whether or not it makes all the perfect market sense for them, I, obviously, I can't predict the future with that, but I can say that having an ordinance that's really easy to use and find the things that you need and conceptualize what your development's going to look for and what you can develop on your land, it's just, it's just gonna make the process so much easier.
I know we have some projects in the Old Town area that some of this will come into effect with how they're laid out and planned. And of course, we're all pointing to the big one, the Medical Diamond is gonna test a lot of this.
We tried not to change too, too much with the dimension, even though the formatting really changed, so that did mean we had to make tweaks, we tried not to do anything too dramatic.
Any other questions or comments here?
I have one concern. The vehicle fuel station in a B1 neighborhood business, because these days, anytime you get a, a gas station, you end up with a convenience store along with it. Is there any way, because that's in a neighborhood of R1 and R2 possibly, is there any way to limit the maximum size of, of the fueling station?
Well, I think one of the things, one of the controls that the Planning Commission adds is that it's gonna be permitted by special use. So therefore, you can use all of those standards that you would typically use in a special use permit. Will it create more traffic than what's, you know, what's reasonable within a neighborhood? Is it gonna create more noise? That sort of thing. And so you'll have the ability to say yes or no to something or to limit the size.
When it comes to a lot of the gas stations that cross our desks these days, unfortunately, too, I think that the convenience store size is only getting bigger. So that's kind of what, what's in market demand right now is the sheets kind of style and stuff like that where they're huge. They're, so I, I understand wanting to limit that, but I'm not sure how much the market does.
But what that said, that particular one that you just mentioned wouldn't even work in a neighborhood.
Right.
You know?
It's too much traffic.
It, no, it'd have to be, like, on Jesse or Washington or something.
Right.
And, yeah, and B1 and B2 still have the, even the, the lot coverage requirements as well.
Yeah.
Yep.
The other thing I didn't see mentioned were tiny houses, tiny homes.
I think that's the reduction in the minimum.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a particular name for them, but the, the reduction to reduce from the minimum dwelling size to 600 better suits, though.
It is a tiny home. Yeah. The standard for a tiny home is like 450 to 700.
So, yeah, so it'll meet your larger tiny homes, if that makes sense.
And I also think at a certain point, you worry about, you know, somebody making a big investment and then not being able to sell it and also nobody maintaining it. So there's a certain sized tiny home that, you know, just kind of deteriorates and doesn't do much positive unless, well, I mean, in, in terms of value, over time, it doesn't grow in value. It generally goes the other way.
Okay. That's all I have.
Anyone else with some questions for our presenters?
No. Maybe not a question, but observation would be on the permissible use grid that you have, page three. What if? So you have your dwelling multiple unit, up to four units, in your MU1. Permissible uses are all across there, like we were talking about earlier. Could those be, instead of Ps, could those be special use permits?
Yeah, I think that's, that's the direction, I think.
That we were talking about earlier.
Yep.
And then I noticed the same thing on your dwelling two-family, that would be another.
The problem with that is that, that district is replacing for the most part the RO1 district.
Yeah.
So then you're gonna create, well, no, I guess I was thinking it would create non-complimentary uses, but it wouldn't.
What I, what I do like in that area, eating and drinking establishments, because that's something that I see very frequently when I travel. You know, there's, there might be a, a home that's converted into a small restaurant or something like that that's available.
Just a, just a, just a primary street.
Yeah, it is, it's permitted as special use.
Yeah, special use.
On a primary street, which makes a lot of sense.
Right. And just on ground floor, like you have here. So, yeah, okay. That's all I have, sir.
All right. I think we are ready to move to the public comment section of the meeting. Purpose, public comm, I'll go over this briefly. Purpose of public comment is to address the commission speakers. The commission speaker shall address their remarks to the commission as a whole. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual commission members, city staff, or the audience. You may ask general questions about the subject of the presentation. All such questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Speaker shall not ask questions again of specific commission members. You are limited to three minutes and may only speak once, and you should limit your remarks to business within the jurisdiction of the commission, our presentation this evening. Would anyone like to make public comment this evening?
Greetings, everybody. Just a general comment, great presentation. I'm sorry. My name is Jeff Bulls. My address is 2634 Gorham Place. That's on the north side of Saginaw. Great presentation. Thank you so much for all the information. I would submit a suggestion because this is great. I think, obviously, there is not a lot of people here. And I know I, myself and Cassie and Bob, we had a meeting about what I'm about to say, and I just wanted to present it to you guys, just to kinda get it out there as a reminder. I think it'd be great to have at least one public presentation at a community center, at a, you know, at a, at a central, general place where more people can get this. And not even necessarily this in this format, but more of a visioning. Why is the zoning, why this is changing and why it's better for the community, like, kind of a narrative more so than, you know, I know Bobby, you said it was kinda wonky, which it is, I mean, I'm, I'm cool with it, but, you know, more of a vision of why it's changing, why it's gonna be great for the community, you know, and maybe give some examples of how, you know, it's gonna change and what it would look like. Say, you know, I saw on the, on the map, you know, just off of 675 there where Magic Kitchen used to be. And I see some of that is changing to mixed use. Maybe some visioning about what types of businesses could be there. Maybe coffee shop, maybe this or that, like, you know, more vision. And so, you know, hopefully, if that's something that can be made to happen, myself, you know, the organization I'm here representing in Saginaw cap, we can help with planning that or coming up with some ideas on how that can happen. So thanks for the time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to make a public comment? Please come forward.
My name's Gary Dawkins, and I would just like to reiterate what Jeff said, 'cause this is my first time coming to this meeting. And I didn't get a lot of clarity as far as the exact locations that these zones was gonna take place, 'cause, see, I have on glasses, my eyes wouldn't let me do a lot of small print reading, but if you did decide to do that, I think it'd be a great benefit to the people in the community to kinda, you know, empower their vision of what the neighborhood could look like and probably will look like in the future because that's really what, that's really what we need right now. We need to see what the vision of the city of Saginaw is gonna be for our community. So I just wanna reiterate what Jeff's just said.
Mr. Dawkins? Can you state your address, please?
1623 James Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in the public comment period?
Steve Moyers, 2811 East Genesee. I'd, I think I know almost everybody here. I apologize because I was late to this and this may have been covered already, but I was, I'm seeking just a little bit of clarity on some of the R zonings and, and perhaps the presenters can, can, can speak to this maybe. If not, I have some other stuff that I will follow up properly. But on the paperwork, we have R1, low-density residential. When you go to the zoning map, the legend of the map says, "single-family residential." That makes sense. R2, medium-density residential. And then on the legend of the map, R2 agricultural residential.
Yeah, the map legends, correct.
Has that, has that been addressed when I was just not here? So I could probably just skip the rest of it.
That was a typo.
Okay, so, so my apologies. I, I just was looking at that and I was hoping I could get a little clarity. Like I mentioned, I did have some things I will follow up with later, but this isn't the proper place with the protocols of the three-minute timing. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
We'll talk to you soon.
That's all mine. Is there any other public comment? One more time, do we have any other public comment to come forward? I believe at this time, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Nope.
Nope.
You don't have a quorum, you can't make a motion, you just end the meeting.
True. That's right, since we didn't have to prove an agenda, that was the first thing I got to.
Just the meeting ended.
Let me thank everyone for their attendance then, and we will close our meeting.